All right, we reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting with item number seven E. Discussion on proposed letter to be sent to the Union Pacific Railroad. You gonna take this one?
I will tee it up and then possibly hand it down the table. Mr. Mayor and council members, in your packet was a letter to the Union Pacific Railroad, laying out the general outline of a plan on how we might proceed towards a quiet zone designation in the future for Shakopee. Councilmember Luce has taken the lead on this issue, so if you have any questions about the language of the letter or anything like that, I'm hoping he would be happy to field those. But what we're looking for here is, is the council comfortable with this letter going on behalf of the city as an organization?
Do you take this now, Council Luce? Give some background for us, please.
Well, Matt had a question.
Oh, Councilman Lehman.
Well, the first draft that came out, Mike's first draft, I responded to the city administrator with some of the concerns that I had with the first draft that actually I got from council, because when we had the discussion about the rail issues, what I thought I heard was that we weren't interested in closing a whole bunch of crossings. So if that's the case, then we need to make sure that's clear in the letter. The other issue that I had with it is it didn't, it didn't talk specifically about this, the, how much speed increase, which raises the fence issue, because over a certain speed, you have to have a fence running down the middle of your town. And I sensed from council's discussion that we weren't in favor of a fence, because it would divide the community, so. And I see that some of that's been addressed. The at-grade crossing has not been. It says potentially a closure of some at-grade crossings. Do we have a number that we're comfortable with? Or are we gonna let them run with it and come back and say, well, we're gonna close like six or seven? So I think we need to clarify that as a body first, before we do this in the letter, so that they know what we're really asking for. And then, my last concern was, you know, and I can't really address two more concerns. One, I can't really address, because it's way out of our area, but we know that there's an issue going on with the oil cars breaking axles and going up in flames and all this stuff. And obviously, we don't want that to happen in the middle of Second Avenue downtown, so that would have to be resolved by whatever the railroad and the manufacturer's doing before we'd allow a speed increase. And then, the last one that I had was speed fence crossings.
So let's talk about fence.
The last one was the consulting, consultant that we would be paying for to check into this, which I'm supportive of, would look into, would a 29 mile an hour speed cause any harm to foundations located so close to the tracks? Other than that, this draft is, you know, much better than the first draft, and they usually do get better as we go.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Um, so, you, let's just toss one out there right now. The fence portion of that?
Yep.
Is that addressed in the letter, or no?
Um.
To your liking?
It is, because it wouldn't allow...
Well, I know it's addressed, but that's what, you brought it up as a point, but I don't know what your issue was.
Well, I had all my issues, and I wanted to make sure all of them were addressed in the letter. And the fence one is, as long as we're 29 mile an hour or less, which is my understanding.
So your fence is no longer an issue?
Correct.
Okay. Cross that one off the list.
Yep, so we got at-grade crossings, damage to properties by a 29 mile an hour. And then, we can't do much about the rail cars, other than ask that there's, that issue is resolved before any speed increase, which it probably would be, because this process takes some time.
Okay.
The reason the crossings were put in is, with our talks with the FRA, as you remember, it's pretty much a gimme, you're gonna have to give up at least one. Just addressing the fact that we're open to at least closing one. I'm sure they're gonna ask for many more, but, you know, this is gonna be a discussion back and forth.
Well, I think, I think the one, Mayor, if I may, I think the one that they're kind of looking at would be the one by RAR. And city council did try to do that at one point, even brought it to a public hearing, to which point the council then decided not to. Whether that happens again or not, don't know, but I, the question I have is, if they come back and say that we have to close five crossings, do we wanna close five crossings? So, we don't wanna go into this saying, we're gonna close crossings, have them come back and say, okay, we're gonna close five crossings, and we're gonna do this, this, and this, and this, and then we're gonna turn around and say, eh, you know what, we don't wanna close five crossings. So, let's not start until we know exactly what it is we're gonna do. What are we willing to do before we start the train down the tracks?
Councilor Mokel.
Would you like to change the word "some" to "one" at-grade crossing?
We could do that, but then, we're gonna be fighting about which one, but, you know, I, I was under the understanding based on, you wouldn't have to close any crossings if you added certain amenities, which might be these four quadrant gate systems and so on, so, so on like that. We could add some wording in here where, with minimal amount of crossings, because that leaves it vague and kinda telegraphs that we really are not interested in closing a whole bunch of crossings.
Before we go into depth on individual ones, does anybody else on council have any major issues or concerns with, so I have a list so far of the closures, and then, understanding of the consultants at 29 miles per hour, what the harm to the surrounding buildings would be with regard to foundations and such? Are there any other major concerns that, within this letter, that we need to address as council this evening? All right, so we've got two things to work out. So everybody's comfortable with the general outline of it, and we're in good shape. Councilor Whiting?
I think this is an opening volley. I think we're gonna have a few back and forths, like you mentioned. It's a negotiation. I'd leave it vague, like councilmember Lehman had mentioned, and then see what they come back with.
Yeah, I'm, I'm nearly good with the letter as it is. The only issue that we, I think, need to go through is the closures portion. I don't wanna number closures, or, or say that it'll be five closures, because I mean, five closures between, you know, Scott and Somerville would be totally different than five closures other places. And so I wouldn't wanna limit that, I just said, one thing that I thought was, we could do the potential closure of, of a minimal number of at-grade crossings, just to understand that we want to have as few as possible.
That's a different wording, yeah.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
You okay with that?
Yeah, with as few cross enclosures as possible, or something, whatever. Yep, minimal, yep.
Okay. And there's nothing that addresses the harm to foundations within the letter?
No, but the consultant would do that, and, or at least as if, if that's what this body is gonna be asking the consul, the consultant to take a look at.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Lehman, that's correct. I don't think that necessarily needs to be addressed in this letter. If we receive a favorable response back from the railroad, the next step would be for the city to identify consultants that work in this field, and select one, and determine the scope of what we're asking that consultant to do. So we'll make a note to make sure that that's on the list of things we would want a consultant to look at, but that comes in the next step after this letter gets out the door, and hopefully gets some kind of, you know, positive response from the railroad that they're willing to, to engage.
Okay, so, oh, Council Luce?
Yeah, this is just an opening volley. We just wanna get some dialogue going. We've spoken with one of their representatives who's very low on the food chain, and we need to get some input from the people up above. So, you know, whatever needs to be changed to keep everyone on board, I'm okay with. I just wanna get this out, so that we can get some response and get this project moving.
Perfect. So, is council okay with just the changes? And there are also some grammatic and typographical changes that need to happen in this. Is council okay with those changes we've discussed tonight being made, and then this going out without it coming back to council again, or are we that comfortable with it?
I'll make, I'll make that motion, Mayor, that we make the changes discussed by council this evening, specifically to the closures, being minimal, and make the changes and mail it.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that with an amendment. If you approve, I'd like to see it go out under the signature of mayor and council.
Yeah, that would be one of the changes to identify that.
Just for, you like all five of your signatures to appear on the letter?
No.
Okay. So the mayor will, the mayor will sign, as is our custom.
Mayor, mayor, and then he'd sign his name, and then it's, and council.
Right.
Council wouldn't be signed.
Right.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Amendment is accepted.
Any further discussion?
Do you have a second?
Yeah, he's seconded it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item F, reviewed franchise transfer application for, from Comcast Corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I think this should be a short one that I can handle from here. I don't have any presentation on it this evening. But several weeks ago, it was announced in the media that Comcast Corporation, which holds the cable franchise here in the city of Shakopee, as well as in many, many other suburban communities in the metropolitan area, plans to divest itself of its customers and franchise agreements here in the state of Minnesota. They are looking to do this in order to gain a favorable approval from the FCC to acquire Time Warner Cable, in order to meet their monopoly thresholds and have the FCC look favorably upon their acquisition. They actually need to get a little bit smaller before they can get bigger. So, they have selected Minnesota as one of the markets that they plan to depart. They would like to transfer the city of Shakopee's franchise agreement along with that of their other metropolitan area communities to a brand-new company that has just been formed called Midwest Cable Company. We received official notification of their desire to make this transfer last week. We now have 30 days to determine whether or not they have given us a complete enough set of information for the city to make a determination, and then we have 120 days to actually make the determination and consent to the transfer, or withhold, formally withhold our consent from the transfer. What we would be looking at and evaluating during this 120-day period is Midwest Cable Company's legal, technical, and financial qualifications to assume the franchise and serve the residents and customers in the city of Shakopee. We last went through this type of activity in 2005. It was already underway when I started working for the city, but I was present for the concluding months of it. Councilmember Lehman was here as well, and we'll remember that this is something that unfortunately dragged on for many, many months, and involved a lot of updates and back and forth with attorneys and so forth, so. To get the ball rolling and make sure that we are within the timelines provided, I'm recommending that the city sign the attached letter of engagement with a law firm of Moss and Barnett. They're a twin cities law firm. We've used them as recently as a few months ago to do a franchise fee audit, which makes sure that Comcast is paying us the total sum that they owe us under our existing franchise agreement. They are very well-versed in these telecommunications issues, and have already been retained by numerous other suburban communities. By going with their firm and having them represent a significant number of Comcast customers, we'll achieve some economies of scale in the analysis of this, so.
Council Whiting?
Will we be renegotiating the franchise agreement?
We will not be renegotiating the franchise agreement. The proposed transfer is a transfer of the agreement under its current terms and conditions, and it does not expire until 2019.
Councilman Lehman?
We could spend probably a week talking just about this topic.
Don't get me started.
It's very, very involved, and, just, I'll throw a quick one out there. Let's say in 2019 that we don't renew a franchise agreement. We have a lot of infrastructure in our right of way. What happens to it? Do they take it out? Do they leave it there? Do they ban it? It's just a, it's a, I'll make a motion to retain the services of Moss and Barnett, to review the franchise transfer application received from Comcast, and I would further add to authorize staff to utilize the services of Steve Guntchen and Bill Anderson, as they deem necessary throughout this process. Those, and I'll speak to that in a second.
Go ahead.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Luce?
The folks that I, I mentioned were with the city's telecommunications, working specifically on this topic. I don't know if staff's gonna need that. They're looking at professional legal services here, but them two individuals do bring a very good perspective on this topic, that if staff has to utilize their services, it's a minimal cost, and I don't think they need to come back and ask for any kind of approval. I'd just like to let them have that flexibility if they seem necessary.
All right, so just to be clear, you're not saying that they have to be used, just that it's within your motion?
No.
Okay. Any discussion?
Chris had some.
I was just gonna note, councilmember Lehman brings up a good point, which is, we recently disbanded our telecommunications advisory commission, in part because we thought, hey, our franchise is good until 2019, and then in our mailbox arrives this. So, as we noted at the time that we disbanded some of those groups, there may be a need to bring back groups on a short timeframe for specific projects. And as we move through this process and start to get the initial reports from this attorney, there may be the need for some citizen input into the process. So, councilmember Lehman mentions two highly qualified citizens that are currently available, and we may have others that are interested in offering comment as well. With this retention of this law firm, council can expect an initial presentation in the month of September, as far as initial findings, and you'll get more education on how these things work directly from the attorney at that time.
Great. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item seven G, Forget the Flood Friday authorizations. This one is from, basically from me. We are working on a project to help get more traffic and more people downtown Shakopee to support our downtown Shakopee businesses, while the 101 and 41 River crossings are closed, to help keep those, to give as much support from a city perspective of those businesses as we possibly can. So I'm requesting that council approve two basic things. One is on three Fridays, starting this Friday, and then two Fridays in July, closing First Avenue in both directions from, between Holmes and Lewis, to have events in the street in that area. The two July ones are to be, to be determined. But the first one this Friday would be our fire department taking, making a temporary makeshift splash pad, so kids can come down and play, and parents can bring their kids down here and have fun in downtown, and really show support for the businesses that we've got down here. Second piece of that is suspending, I think is our, the open container ordinance?
Sure.
Is that better, that's what, okay. So that folks can have alcohol on the street in a very restricted location, as well as in a very restricted period of times, it would be from 5:00 to 8:00 PM in that location. Originally, we had talked about having the ability for the establishments downtown to sell alcohol and take it out in the street. That is currently not, we're not able to do that because of state law. So, in the future, if we wanna do that again, we can amend it and fix that into the future, but so this would be just the ability for parents to come down and sit and get, take out food and, and show support for the downtown businesses. So I hope to have your support in doing this, and we'll take any questions that folks have. Councilman Lehman?
The first action requested for the closure of the streets, I don't have a problem with that, although I find it ironic that the floods are closing a lot of streets, and to celebrate, or celebrate the floods, we're gonna close some more. It just seems kinda odd, but I, I don't, I don't have any problems with that part. I do have some issues with the second portion, and I guess I, if I can just go through my concerns there is, the liquor licenses by the establishments don't allow them to sell to, to a consumer to walk outside with, if they do, they're in violation of their license. If we're asking people to bring their kids down to a splash pad event, and telling them they can bring their own liquor, you know, I, I almost see it as kind of an entrapment, because they're gonna get out at a parking lot, car at the parking lot, crack a beer, and walk down to where it's authorized, and, and walking from there to there, it's not authorized, and it's not legal. So, and if you're gonna bring your kids down to this event, and if you absolutely have to have alcohol in that three-hour period, you should just stay home and get drunk. So, next to that, if, the, the proper process is, for anybody else, as we saw earlier on the agenda for the, for the church, is that they apply for a special permit to, to be able to do that, and I see this as government exempting themselves from their own rules. So, I have a couple of issues with that portion of it. The next issue I have is if somebody is standing on First Avenue with an open container out of their cooler in the area that it's authorized, that person could say, I just came out of X, Y, and Z establishment with this, potentially getting that establishment in trouble, even though the establishment did nothing wrong. So, I wouldn't have a problem with that open container area if it was done through a special permit process in a area. So your July events could go through that process, and I would support that, but I don't support this way of doing it, for the reasons that I've outlined.
Okay. Then you wanna make a motion for the first part?
I will. I'll make a motion to order no parking and authorize a closure of both lanes of traffic on First Avenue, from Holmes to Lewis, from 4:00 to 8:00, 8:30 Friday, June 27th.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second, Councilor Mokel, any discussion? Council Whiting?
Well, as far as the fire trucks and the hoses and the water, you know, I just think there's a perception, you know, with the adding to the storm sewer water and the flooding process, we're gonna flood, and I guess, what message are we sending there? That's my concern with this.
That wasn't the motion. The motion was to close the street.
Oh, is this part of, but isn't that part of it?
It's just to close the street, is all it is.
Closing the street's fine.
The closing the street allows the activity, but it is there. So, any further discussion? Councilor Luce?
My question is, on closing the street for the splash pad, what are you gonna use to close the street? If we're gonna have a bunch of children playing in the middle of the street, I would like something very capable of stopping a vehicle.
It will be barricaded, and fire truck.
They're going to use the fire trucks as barricades.
Well, there would be barricaded. I don't, I don't think the fire trucks are gonna be barricades, no, but there will be barricades out, as any street closure is, yeah.
Similar to what we do for Night to Unite, to establish block party zones.
Council Whiting?
This is also part of the, the, the street closing for the, the classic car show, right? Also, that'll be on the other street.
Mm-hmm.
So, that'll be on Lewis, and this is on First Avenue between Lewis and Holmes. So there'll be essentially a few blocks.
Four to, four to eight.
Right.
I mean, the intent, Mayor, if I may, the intent, I think, is that the 69-1, 69 under construction, not accessible, 101 closed from the flood, there's really no draw to this area. So the businesses down here are saying, you know, the only people that are coming down here are the people that are specifically coming down here for a targeted purpose.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
And, and how do we, how do we telegraph to them, saying, you know, we didn't forget about you? You know?
And that's, that's exactly the piece, right there, is that we understand, as a city council and as a city, that your businesses are extremely important to us, and we want to do everything we can to help you thrive, and help make sure that people see you, and people take pictures of their kids while they're playing outside, and, and something that's unique and fun and different than what we normally do, and it's extremely cheap, and fairly easy for us to put together, and staff did a great job of putting the, and the fire department, police department, for putting the ideas and into motion for how we could pull it off. I didn't know if it would be possible or not, but the point is to show downtown businesses that we care. I mean, it's more than likely gonna be raining on Friday evening, but we can't schedule around the rain, so what are we gonna do with that?
We'll need to use the fire trucks.
If it, yeah, exactly. So, so, so that is 100% the intent, and, so, any further discussion on this motion that's on the floor? Councilor Luce?
If we're gonna be making a no parking there, I would like to have the signs go up immediately, so that people have a very good awareness that this is gonna happen. I don't wanna have anybody having their car towed.
Yeah, absolutely. It will go out, I'm assuming tomorrow or Thursday morning, one or the other, so that we, and we have to go through those details, and I will also be going down, 'cause it's kinda my baby here, and talking to the downtown businesses, and tell them what's going on and why it's happening, and see if there's anything they can do with it as well. So I'll go talk to everybody. Councilman Lehman?
And since my business isn't located down in this area, as a fire truck drives down First Avenue, just throw a bottle of water out at me or something? Just tease me.
He'll throw something, yeah.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Second piece, which I very much understand is the, is the dicier piece of the two, but I think that for young families to come down and have a, it, it absolutely worked better when you could purchase alcohol from the, the bars that were downtown. And so if we wanna kill this piece, that's fine. I don't think it will work as well if this piece gets killed, but I, I definitely think that this is a good portion of it, just to sit down and, with friends, and get a pizza from Turtles, or, you know, and order onion rings from Wampox, and sit down, and then, if people are down there having fun, and then go in afterwards and things like that. So I, I think this is a, a good piece of the draw for it, to have that opportunity and option for people to have alcohol on the street, but if that's something that council is completely uncomfortable with, then that's fine. Council Whiting?
Here's the slippery slope part of it. Derby Days wants to change their venue to be an open venue for drinking all through the park, too. If we do this for one, are we gonna be doing it for others? Are we gonna open it up for the car show to have beers? Are we gonna, I mean, it could, it could get out of hand quick, you know? Just wanna put that out there for discussion.
Councilman Lehman?
Derby Day, and, and like I said earlier, Derby Days, or the church functions, or whatever, are going through a permitting process, where they're getting a special permit to be able to do that at a special location with restrictions that are pre-planned through the police department, and everything, like Derby Days is, and so on and so forth, and they're still working out the issues with Derby Days. One of the issues with Derby Days having open areas, services that the police department, and this is just one, because I don't know all their, their discussions, but they wanna make sure that the access and egresses to the, to the site are controlled, so that the officers know where to station themselves, to make sure nothing's leaving that, that restricted area. And all this stuff is, you know, gets worked out ahead of time, and it's conditioned on these things meeting the criteria, or, or it's not acceptable, and in this case, that's not happening. I would also, you know, if we're gonna bring people down here to help these businesses, these folks need to go in and, and patronize these establishments, and I would prefer they not bring their own. I want them to go into the various bars and restaurants and use their services, because that's what ultimately makes the businesses successful.
I agree with you entirely, but I can't take my three-year-old into Arnie's with me. I mean, but, that's, this is a very set period of time, between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM.
All the more reason to bring your wife, and you guys take turns. You go in to Arnie's, down a couple, four ones.
Say hello to Shaw.
That's why you have such a stellar marriage, my friend. No, and, and again, if it's something the council's not okay with, I would very, I've had a lot, a lot of folks talk to me about wanting to be more open in Shakopee about doing these kinds of things. I don't agree that it's a slippery slope, myself, because this is a very defined period of time, and it's not going until 2:00 in the morning, or 1:00 in the morning, or anything like that, where we're gonna have a lot of issues that way with it. Councilor Luce?
I hope nobody's kidding themselves and not believing there's a little drinking that goes on with the car show, if that's happening. I think this, I, I would like to see this go forward to the point of, like Matt says, have the local businesses be able to participate, and I think it would help the car show if they could have a beer, and not, you know, be breaking the rules and openly. It's a good test case. As far as being a slippery slope, we can slam the door anytime.
Council Whiting?
I'd like to have the chief weigh in on this, if you don't mind.
Oh, both, both. Both of you. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good chief, bad chief?
Let you figure out which one.
That's all right, I didn't say anything.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you know, we've, we've dealt with these before, with the church...
Mister Mayor, members of council, um, you know, we've, we've dealt with these before, with the church parking lot, or the church festivals and so forth on the street. My main concern, uh, number one is making sure we get all the vehicles out of there, cuz people get very upset when, when you're towing their vehicles. So if we're shutting down the whole thing, there does need to be a good education effort going out beforehand. People do, they, they get very upset, and, uh, we feel their wrath when we have to tow a car. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned about glass, um, being out there and, and any potential mess. Um, any plastic containers should be a clear container, that type of thing for a mixed drink, um, those types of things. Do I think it'll get out of hand? I mean, with the kids at the splash pad, no. Um, our ability, though, you know, we usually have one officer that kinda monitors traffic for the car show, and if you're down there, you're gonna, I mean, let's face it, people are gonna wanna walk around and, and go look at some of the cars, too, so uh, it's, it is gonna be very difficult, and if, if this, you know, to control that, and we are gonna have to send officers through there at eight o'clock, I believe is the time, uh, make sure all the containers are, are pulled off the street, and especially if you're opening it up to traffic again, so. Um, that's something to consider as well. I, I am worried a little bit about the slippery slope, as you, as you said, because I, I do think that, that this does open the door a little bit for, um, again, that whole more of a beer fest for Derby Days than what we've had in the past, so, um, this particular event, though, uh, it, we can handle it, absolutely. But, yeah, some of my concerns are the, the glass containers that, or the glass bottles.
Chief Coleman, you have anything to add?
Good chief, bad chief.
Yeah.
Look out. Must be able to walk around with a beer on a truck.
Um, I guess, I'll, I'll go with the glasses probably my biggest concern. Um, if I'm spraying the water around downtown, uh, the little kids are gonna be running around on the street. I, I really don't want glass down on that street. Um, other than that, I, I haven't figured out exactly what a splash pad is, how I'm gonna do this, or, or who's gonna design this yet, but I'm sure there's some great engine, where's my engineer?
You, you ask, you ask a child, that's usually what they'll tell you.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll spray some water around. I, I don't think it'll be that technical or advanced to what we'll do.
Exactly. Get them wet.
I, I would prefer not to have any kind of glass container where we're got any water.
Absolutely. Councillor Loose?
Uh, one other comment for the chief there, it'd be, um,
Which one?
Pardon?
Which one?
Sorry. One that was just there. Um, would it be possible, I, I really am concerned about barricading the street as far as putting little kids playing in the street, and having a car, you know, a standard barricade, a car can go through pretty easy. Uh, if we parked the fire truck crossways in the street, they're not gonna move that.
You're correct. That's what we do on the freeway. Um, on the same token, if I get a fire call that's needs to be taken care of in the city, that fire truck will be leaving. Yeah, I can't have it sitting there as a splash pad. It will be taking off to take.
Correct, but we'll have other barricades to take care of that, but if we can, we'll be as safe as possible.
Yeah, my plan was only to bring one truck down, though. I wasn't planning on bringing the fleet down.
It's crack eye.
Councillor, tongue-in-cheek, if you'll excuse me, the old squad cars are not really that great if you wanted to park those in front of the barriers.
How would the other chief feel about that?
Yeah.
He's got insurance.
They're adminis- they're administrative cars now.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Councillor Mogul?
My, I think, um, Chief Tate brought up a concern that was mine, is with, if it, if they were buying from the businesses, the alcohol, I think what, it would also be telling them what time they had to be done drinking it. Whereas I think if we do just them bringing their own, the chances are they're not gonna stop doing it at eight o'clock. Whereas if they were being informed every time they were buying a drink, that, by the way, you need to have this by eight o'clock. Thoughts on that?
If this is approved, I mean, we're gonna have to open up those streets, and, and there's just gonna have to be a scheduled sweep of the area. And we'll remind people, it's time to take your coolers back to your, your vehicles and, um, finish up what you gotta do, and we'll be reasonable with it, but, um, by eight o'clock, they're probably had enough, you know, out there on the street, and and again, it'll be a sweep that we go through before we open that, that up to traffic again.
Alright, so to not belabor this too much more.
I wanna clarify, clarify one thing. The streets where the, the car show will be, will be open to liquor also?
Not under this, I don't believe so, no. This is just for, uh, First Avenue, and that, that's gonna be part of the enforcement effort there, is we will gently remind people that.
Can't drink here, but you can drink five feet over here.
Yes.
You would have the ability to amend that if you really wanted to amend that. Um, but if they, if anybody would like a ma- make a motion, go for it now. If nobody wants to make a motion, um, then let's just adjourn. Anyone? Councillor Lehman?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to July first, seven o'clock at the, uh, police department training room.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, councillor Loose, any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We adjourn till July first at seven P M. Thank you.